Good evening and welcome to Red Hook Town Board Meeting. It is October 23rd. Welcome. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We usually start with announcements, but I think because some of you who have come to be here on time at 7:30 for a public comment will postpone announcements until after public comment. So, I'll open the public comment period and ask for anyone who wishes to speak. Show of hands and please say your name and go to the microphone so we can hear you clearly.
My name is Rosemary Zengen. I live at 7310 South Broadway and I have a letter that Dr. Ross has agreed to read from the Save Our Town Committee and then I just have a very few words to say after Dr. Ross is completed. So, may I sit down? Okay?
You may, if you wish.
Dr. Ross?
So, would you like me to read that now?
If you're going to.
Yes, yes. I've been asking you. Yeah, but I should. This is from the Save Our Town Committee. It's addressed to the Red Hook Town Board. This is dated actually September 12th, the copy I have here. "We, the undersigned, had significant concerns about the application recently submitted by the Red Hook Town Board for a sidewalk grant proposed for the east side of Route 9, South Broadway in the town of Red Hook. We, the business owners and residents, are opposed to the above-mentioned sidewalk for the following reasons. The safety of our pedestrians encouraged to cross by such a proposed sidewalk from one side of the road to the other. Youngsters, seniors, the mentally disabled from our house, and students are already being jeopardized. The speedsters, large trucks, and the inability for cars, let alone pedestrians, to get out of the driveways and roads on both sides of the street already impose a serious concern. Within the last year, a Bard student was hit by a truck and killed. A bicyclist was nearly fatally injured by crossing from one sidewalk to the other on the opposite side. Sidewalks on the east side of South Broadway affected by the proposal would create additional work, cost, and a loss of business for the landholders and businesses in the above-mentioned district. Grant money is not free money. It is money taken from taxpayer dollars that could go for more concrete uses in the town of Red Hook and other townships in Dutchess County, i.e. safety, food, resources, street maintenance, conservation, preservation, etc. Sidewalks on the east side of Route 9, South Broadway, would create additional financial burdens for all Red Hook taxpayers to maintain and a direct financial impact to the property owners affected. We and scores of other taxpayers were opposed to this application and proposal for these reasons and a multitude of others. And it's signed sincerely, Rosemary Zengen, Ralph Resenda, Richard Howland, Kathleen Dowris, Anna Freed, and Michael Costello." And it has her contact phone number on it as well.
Thank you, Dr. Ross. I did a little survey. I didn't spend a lot of time on it, but I took a survey of all the businesses and the frontage, the frontage on Route 9, and I found that the majority of the landholders, and I have a petition here that I will read to you shortly, I won't read all the names, but Richard Howland, Mr. Trebel, who owns almost 200 square feet, Mr. Howland, up, not square feet, footage, 200 feet along that corridor, say no to this proposal. Mr. Trebel, 200 feet, say no to this proposal. Elizabeth Wilms, no to this proposal. The Trebles, who own two properties, no to this proposal. The Zengens, as you are aware, since the time this was first put on the table, we are opposed to this. It's just, I know what you're trying to do, but it's not necessary at this point. Our infrastructure has problems in other areas. This money is much better used to correct the problems that we have. So, the petition with all the signatures of people on that frontage and then some are on this petition and it's in front of you, ladies and gentlemen. These sidewalks are unnecessary. There are 101 infrastructure projects these monies can be used for. Instead of starting a new project, let's put this money to good use by fixing one of our existing sidewalks, bridges, or highways that are in need of repair. We just feel it's unnecessary at this time and you're all wonderful people on this board, but I just want to tell you, I'm going to pass this out. The Red Hook United Methodist Church has nothing to do with our opposition to these sidewalks, but there are people that are starving in the town of Red Hook that have no money to buy food and we're talking about thousands of dollars to go to concrete. So, they do not sanction our not-wanting sidewalks, but I just want, because you're all aware of the food pantries and how much money is necessary to run a food pantry. And if you look at the lines on West Market Street on a Sunday, you will see lines of people lined up because they need food and we're talking about thousands of dollars going for sidewalks that the property owners do not want. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Zeng. Would you care to read this letter from the Methodist Church?
I'd like you to read it if you would, Mr. Brandon.
No, I have already said to you earlier in the week that long ago I was not going to read a letter, but anyone who is welcome to read.
Can I sit down and read it?
If you wish.
Greetings, friends. This is the first time we've had to make an appeal in this manner. The Red Hook United Methodist Church food pantry is currently providing food for over 300 people each month. As in past years, we have received a grant from the Northeast New York Regional Food Bank in Lakeview, New York. The difference this year is that the food supply has diminished and the food costs are increasing. Last year, we served an average of 276 people per month and the cost for food was between $500 to $900 a month. This year so far, we are averaging 300 people per month and the cost for food has been from 1,000 to 1,500, not including the value of food donations. We also try to provide special foods on holidays for over 40 families. We expect to have difficulty paying food bills by the beginning of January 2014. Many of our clients repeatedly tell us that they would not know what to do if we were not here. They can come to us for food any Sunday when they need it. The food pantry is open every Sunday for two hours. One woman recently said to us, "I haven't had anything in my refrigerator in months and with a child in the house." So, if you can find it in your heart to support this need, our clients would greatly appreciate your donation. Tax-deductible donations may be made to the Red Hook United Methodist Church food pantry. All of your gift will go for food, so we are completely a volunteer organization. Donations can be sent to the Red Hook United Methodist Church food pantry, 4 Church Street, Red Hook, New York, 12571. Call 758-1244 if you would like to make arrangements or ask questions. Thanks very much. Fred and Pat Benner from the Food Pantry Committee. But I tell you, it says here 40 families, but I don't know if on a Sunday, you live in the village, Sue, so I know that you see the lines there, the lines of children and you know, we talk about infrastructure needs. Our economy is in such trouble right now. It's not just that I don't want the sidewalk, but you know, like I said to Chris Close one time, there's no like a grant fairy. This money has to come from somewhere and it's going to come from the taxpayers and we're just at our peak now and people are starving and I don't think we should talk about concrete sidewalks when we already have a sidewalk on the west side of Route 9 that is perfectly okay. And you know, the people that are opposed to it, Pete Girardi walks the sidewalks, God bless him. Then I see Bard students, but they have the shuttle. But in, from December to March, I'm telling you, if you see two people a day walking that street, it's a lot, you know? And now we're going to, and even if you say that you'll maintain the sidewalks, even if the town board says that they will maintain the sidewalks, you're going to have to pay money to Mr. Vosberg or whoever. Where's this money coming from? It's coming from our tax dollars. And if you can't maintain the sidewalks, then we will have to maintain the sidewalks. We just don't have the money to do it for two or four or 10 people a day walking. So, thank you very much for your time and you know that I will fight this to the very end. I do not want sidewalks and neither do my neighbors who have lived in their homes. I don't know, Mr. Howland, how many, how many years have you lived there? 100?
Come on.
You've lived there 40 years, 50 years.
Does anyone else wish to speak? There are people here, does anyone else wish to speak on this topic? Do you want to speak, Mr. Howland?
Yeah, I've lived there since 1968 and I don't see the necessity for sidewalks. There's probably any people walking down that way in the first place, you know? Not a good time with the economy. I agree with her.
Okay. Does the board have any comments in this regard? Are there any further comments from anyone here on this topic or any other? Anyone? The board, I'd like to hear from the board. Anyone got any comments here on, Jim?
Well, we, the grant application, we don't know if we have the grant yet, but it's something I think that we should look at very closely if we do receive the grant. And we should keep it on the top of our minds and keep it out there so we can hear from the general public and more of the public. Obviously, we've heard from Rose and by the signatures on a petition, a good contingent of property owners and people that live there that at this time do not desire the sidewalk on the east side of Broadway. And I think it's prudent for us to listen to the citizens and follow through from that and look at both sides of this discussion.
Brandon?
Yeah, to the point about, you know, the money is going for other purposes, we, actually, to be clear, we have two grant applications that have been submitted for sidewalks on this side of the highway and neither one of the grant monies would, couldn't be used for feeding the hungry, for example. Not that I don't agree with you that that's more important, but those monies are not earmarked for that. And so, we took advantage of applying for those monies for a purpose that I think humanely the board thought was a good project, especially since we're in the process of getting plans for developments that coincide with our new traditional neighborhood district zoned in that area of town and more people will live there. There'll be more commercial businesses. And I forgot to bring it, but we also, when we submitted the first grant application to the state, we did have a petition signed by, I forget how many people, but anyway, a petition in favor of the sidewalks, a lot of them seniors who, perhaps Pete Girardi was one, I don't remember. So, those were the reasons we felt this was important, that people will be walking there. Also, on the east side of the highway, we have a couple of developments and I'm sure those folks would love to be able to walk down to Holy Cow or to the bank or to Hardscrabble. So, those are the reasons.
Thank you. Ron?
Yeah, I know that there's some opposition to the sidewalk, I've heard, but over the number of years I've been on the board, I have had many people and many of the seniors who live in this area ask for sidewalks and actually have been somewhat chastised for not pushing the development on this side of the road with sidewalks, with crosswalks, all related to safety, all related to easier access for seniors to get to the commercial areas. Holy Cow, Annaford, it's kind of an inevitable need and there is an opportunity to get financing for it at this point. And I would see it as a benefit for the citizens of, who live in this area. Many people do walk down these sidewalks and I mean, I see them walking all the time. I see them mowing the lawn here. And I think it's a reality. The powers-on-high who I have spoken to in the state feel sidewalks are something that wait, on both sides of Route 9 are past due and it's time for us to move into the century. And it's a safety issue, really.
Bill?
No, I haven't.
Okay. I would like to say, just to wrap this up, that first of all, thank you for bringing the letter from United Methodist Church. They do fantastic work. Our church regularly brings canned food and staples there. There are, you're quite right, dozens of people who go there every Sunday for a dinner or a lunch during lunch hour and it is true that people are taking advantage of that pantry more and more, which is a wonderful thing. Brenda's quite right that this funding cannot be used for that purpose, so it really is disconnected to the issue of sidewalks, but I appreciate your bringing this to our attention because it's well, well for all of us to remember that there are people in need in the community. The applications have been submitted, there are two. The Trails Committee and Greenway Committee believes that this is part of the mission of the town to make sure that there are walkable areas in town that allow for exercise and healthy living and safety moreover, more than anything. I know I've walked along the grassy area between Town Hall down to Hardscrabble and it is, it is an awesome feeling to have cars roaring by within a few feet. The state recognizes it, state engineers recognize it as a dangerous area that should have sidewalks and have counseled us to address it. The county, DPW, has counseled us to address it. We are following through with that. We have no idea whether we will or will not receive the funding and so stay tuned. If we do, we obviously will be considering accepting or not accepting. I personally would probably vote to accept because I believe it is a dangerous area. I believe that we are a community that needs to be connected, the southern area of the community to the Village of Red Hook, and so I would support it more than likely. But I thank you for bringing the petition to the attention of the board and for taking the time to come tonight. I would like now to recognize Senator Terry Gibson, who has asked to be on the agenda to speak to the town board. Good evening, sir. How are you tonight?
Good evening. Thank you for having me here.
You're very welcome.
I really appreciate you making room in your agenda. I know you're very busy. As you know, about nine months ago, I was sitting on a village board's trustee linebacker, so I know how difficult it is to work for local government. I have great sympathy and respect for what you do here. Some of the really important issues that affect our daily lives are dealt with at the local government level and I'm going to be commended for stepping up to the plate. I am the ranking member on the Senate Local Governments Committee and having served local government myself, I wanted to, as the new state senator here representing Dutchess and Putnam County, to make the effort to get around, to see all of the boards, the community boards in my district. There's about 30 municipalities in my district. We are conducting a local governments tour right now, trying to get around each one of them. Just to introduce myself, also to let you know about some of the things that we're working on that relate directly to local governments, also to give you a chance to certainly ask us any questions that you have or any comments or ideas. You don't have to wait till I come around to do this, you can certainly reach out to my office anytime. I wanted to make sure you knew about a few things that we're working on and one of them you do know, in fact, I want to thank you for going further, for passing a resolution supporting my proposed amendment to the state constitution, which would prohibit unfunded mandates from being handed down from our state government. I know, having served as you have, that taking your discretionary spending and using it to fund ideas that Albany has is oftentimes keeping you from dealing with things locally that you would like to use that tax money for. I mean, you're raising tax money here as a need to take care of your infrastructure, to invest back in your community and to solve the things here locally that people care about. You shouldn't have to be using that money to fund ideas that Albany has and that's what this amendment's all about, so I thank you for that. I want to let you know too, that in addition to that, you're going to be hearing about very soon that we're going to be rolling out sort of the second part of that amendment, which is coming the other way, which is while we're stopping Albany from funding, from sending down unfunded mandates, we also need to do a much better job of sending you more money to actually fund those mandates. We've examined all of the big mandates and while we think certainly we need to look at changing them drastically, a shorter-term fix, we believe, that's more doable, is to really advocate that over the next 10 years, we set up a plan that begins to bring back a substantial amount of money, meaning millions and millions of dollars, back to our local governments. Give that to them so that it's earmarked for them to actually fund the mandates of your choosing. So, anything that you don't think you should be paying for, that money would be used to fund it, therefore opening up much more of your discretionary spending to use how you choose to use it locally. So, you'll be hearing from that as well and I just wanted to let you know about that. We're also working, though it doesn't affect you directly, I know that the largest part of the tax bill that your taxpayers see comes from school taxes. And we are working very diligently on offering up some new ideas about how to change the way that we fund public education. We believe that that is really, at the end of the day, the way that we're going to significantly reduce the cost of living and the cost of property taxes here throughout the Hudson Valley. So, you'll be hearing more about that as well. I had a chance for the first time this past session to work on the state budget. I wanted to make sure that you knew that we had fought very hard to keep your AIM funding, to actually increase it. There were many that did not want to do that. The compromise ended up being to try to keep the AIM funding at the same level, so you should have received the same amount you received last year, which was 33, about $33,000. I know that's not nearly enough and know that when we go back, we will continue to advocate for more, but at least we were able to keep it stable. There was some good news though, you had an increase in your CHIPS funding of about 27.9%, which would be a little more than $130,000. I hope that that would be useful in some of your infrastructure projects as you move forward and I'm glad that we were able to deliver that increase. Hopefully, we can again continue to increase that as the years move on. I also wanted to bring your attention to a couple of other local government issues that might be of interest to you. You may have heard about my Good Neighbor Act. I don't know how many vacant homes you have here in the town of Red Hook that are in foreclosure, but in many parts of my district, this is unfortunately because of the high cost of living, a way of life now. And the town of Poughkeepsie approached us about the fact that they are having trouble contacting banks and getting someone at the bank to answer the phone and actually hold them accountable for taking care of abandoned property that a bank has taken over. So, we've proposed a Good Neighbor Act, which would hold banks accountable to being good neighbors in your community, so that if they take over a home and it goes into foreclosure, they're required to contact you, give you the name of a person that you can call and say, "You've got to come mow your grass, you've got to come pick the house, you've got to come fix the windows," that you can really hold them accountable to taking care of the property and they don't give you the runaround as they seem to be doing a lot of community. So, we can send you more information about that if you're interested. Also, we want to try to give you a few more tools that you can offer your local seniors as a way of hopefully maintaining more of them here. Because of the high cost of living, because the property taxes are too high, you know as well as I do that a lot of seniors are leaving the area, we're losing a lot of our role models. We're losing a lot of the people that know about the history of where our towns got started and our communities throughout the Hudson Valley are beginning to come a little lopsided. We don't have the amount of senior citizens that we used to and I think it's having a very negative effect on the abilities of our communities to sustain themselves and to grow. So, we are working on something that would be a tax deferment plan that if it were to pass, you would have the option as a board to participate in this plan and you could, on a yearly basis, offer to senior citizens 65 and older, the opportunity to have their taxes waived for a year, their property taxes waived for a year, just at the town level. You would essentially be putting a lien on the house or the property. When that property changed ownership, you would get that money back. The difference would be is that the money would go into the disneying accounts, you would be making a little money on the deal while you're waiting. It wouldn't work for every town, it wouldn't work for every person, but if you wanted to participate in this, you would set the parameters about who qualified and how they could apply, 65 and older. And I will be sending you more information about that in the future. We just want to try to offer you some other tools you may not have for you to use to help try to maintain your senior citizen base. I think with that said, that's sort of an overview of what we're working on local government-wise. I think you know that I'm really committed to trying to reduce the cost of living, reduce property taxes. I want to work with you any way that I can and really look to you for guidance about where we can be of assistance in your community. My office is on Route 9 in the town of Poughkeepsie, right behind Red Lobster. You can come get some seafood and see your senator. And that office is manned Monday through Friday. I have a great staff. My Director of Government Operations, Brian Kelly, happens to be a Red Hook resident, is here with me tonight and you should feel free to contact him anytime you can't reach me. With that said, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you have, ideas, comments.
I would, I would have a question regarding roads. You were talking about additional monies being made available for CHIPS for towns to take care of town roads. Concerning to many of us is the town or the New York State Highway coming off the Taconic into the, through the town of Mylan into the town of Red Hook is in terrible shape and I'm hoping that you recognize that and that you will advocate to have that highway not just patched, but really resurfaced because it's a true danger. I mean, even the best of cars get thrown about on that irregular highway and it's the, shoulders are nonexistent, the pavement is deteriorating on the sides of the roads and I believe recently there was a serious accident in that very area. And I just think New York State needs to pay attention to its highways as well and that's one of them that I can tell you and Red Hook is a very dangerous one.
Are you referring to 199?
I'm referring to 199 off the Taconic Parkway as it comes through the town of Mylan as a gateway to Red Hook, yeah. Yeah, before Rock City.
Okay. I just, I have to look into the details of it, but there was recently some money released from the DOT that was designated specifically to do repaving on Route 199.
Okay, well, that's good to hear.
In the town of Mylan.
That's good to hear.
I can't remember the boundaries of how far, it's not entirely the 199. I know it's in Mylan. We'll get back to you about the specifics.
We have a lot of commuters from Red Hook.
Right.
And you know, who regularly use the Parkway.
Right.
And I hear about this regularly, so I just wanted you to be aware that we're hearing about it.
I'm definitely aware of it. I drive on it a lot and it's like a washboard.
Yep.
It's in awful shape and we've complained about it.
Yeah.
And I think.
It's very dangerous.
It is. So, I know this repaving is going to happen. Let me get back to you about the specifics of where it begins and ends.
Okay, good. Thank you. Anyone?
At the risk of sounding like I'm piling on.
No, that's why I'm here. That's why I'm here.
9G, I travel 9G from Tivoli to 199 coming over here two or three times a day and for several years, the state has been patching that road along the sides on both sides, just in that area. And every summer, they do the same thing and by the time the winter's over, it's all broken apart again. And it just seems to be a bad way to spend the money as opposed to really fixing it and fixing it once and for all rather than patching it. Occasionally, I run into, run into the state DPW guys, but I have neglected to speak to them, so I tossed it over the, over the transmitter to you, Terry.
I appreciate that. When we went to talk, when we went to see the town of Mylan at their board meeting several months ago, they brought this very topic up. And we did as a result, reached out to DOT and add that to our wish list and like I said, I'm pretty sure that that's going to change pretty soon, but I'll get back to you with the details. And if it's not, believe me, we will continue to advocate for that. We have developed a pretty good relationship with DOT. We're working with them on building an overpass over the Taconic State Parkway down in Putnam County, so we're working that contact very well, so I'll get back to you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any questions? Any comments? Thank you for coming.
Okay. Thank you again so much. Jim, please.
We appreciate your time.
Reach out to us anytime. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And next and possibly last comment is our legislator, Ben Trout, who's with us, who would like to speak to us. Ben?
Whether you want to or not.
Are you here? Are you here to observe?
I was, actually, I was here to see Terry, but while I'm here, I guess I can give you a little bit of update on what we're doing. We're actually right in the middle of our budget development season, and the executive is slated to release his tentative budget come November 1st. We just had a very productive town hall meeting with questions and answers last night in Rhinebeck. Luckily, we were still able to get back to the Citizen of the Year Dinner, but he's been doing that across the county, and we're awaiting his tentative budget release to see how the CHIPS will fall, if you will. And Thursday, November 7th, that will be our regular legislative committee meeting, and also the public hearing, the first public hearing that we'll have on the county executive's budget will be that night at 7:00 PM. So we're certainly welcome to attend 22 Market Street in Poughkeepsie. So that's going to be the major undertaking come November and December, and there'll be a public hearing on his budget and a yet-to-be-determined date for a public hearing on our amended budget. So that's basically what's going on with us, and we certainly welcome any input from this board, and anybody who'd like to join us for those proceedings are very welcome.
Thank you, Ben. Thanks for coming. Anyone else? Before we launch into just a couple of announcements, I did want to remind the public that Veterans' Day is Monday, November 11th, and there will be the traditional Veterans' Day ceremony at Memorial Park at 7 o'clock that night, Monday, November 11th. It's a beautiful ceremony that honors the veterans that have served, and it becomes more meaningful every year. Red Hook VFW Post 7765 has sponsored this for many years, and I hope you will all join us. And this, other than to say a wonderful party was had to honor Ruth O'J, given by the Red Hook Rotarians, and all that attended loved it, and she deserved all of the recognition she got. So that happened last night at the Red Hook Firehouse. I'll start, am I right? Bill, have you any announcements?
No.
All right.
Nor do I.
Okay. Brenda?
Well, I just thought we should remind people that polling sites have changed in Red Hook. You may no longer vote at town hall, so everybody should be very aware of where their new potential new site is, and some districts have also changed, so be sure you look for your yellow card in the mail and, or look on the Board of Elections website for that information.
And Tim?
I have not.
Thank you, Brenda. That's timely, and I thought of it driving in, that I must remember to remind everybody that Election Day is November 5th, and of course, I needed Brenda to remind me to remind you. So November 5th is Election Day. It's an important day. Please, everyone get out and vote. Okay. It is just a few minutes after 8:00, and we're going to move right into the agenda, if we can, please. The first item on the agenda is town road speed limits, and this is a result of a number of concerns and investigations on the part of our highway superintendent and in discussion with our attorney for suggested speed limit reductions on various roads that are problematic in Red Hook. And you have before you a resolution requesting modification of speed limits on certain town roads, and requesting review of speed limit on East Curly Corners Road specifically. And I think the easiest thing to do, to cover it and cover it as quickly as I can, is to just read the resolution so that everyone understands the roads that are involved. Whereas the town of Red Hook has noted the need for modification of the speed limit on Bud's Corners Road, from Rockefeller Lane and Walesback Road to Route 9G, and in particular, the town board has noted that the road includes multiple sharp curves marked with 35 mile per hour warning signs. The intersection with Gusky Road is near one of these curves, but marked with a 55 mile an hour approach to Route 9G and is also a sharp curve. And whereas the town of Red Hook has noted the need for modification of speed limit on Walesback Road from Bud's Corners Road to Columbia Avenue, and whereas the town of Red Hook has noted the need for modification of speed limits on the roads within College Park and Linden Avenue subdivisions, and in particular, the town board has noted that the area is entirely residential and densely populated with numerous intersections and limited road lengths, and whereas the town of Red Hook has noted the need for modification of speed limits on the roads within the Willow Park subdivision, and in particular, the town board noted that the area is entirely residential and densely populated. Whereas the town of Red Hook has noted the need for modification of speed limits on the roads within Forest Park subdivision, and in particular, the town board has noted the area is entirely residential and densely populated. The town has noted the need for modification of speed limits on Echo Valley Road subdivision, and in particular, the town board has noted the area is entirely residential and densely populated. Whereas the town of Red Hook has noted the need for modification of speed limits on Deer Run Road, and in particular, has noted, again, this area is entirely residential and densely populated. And finally, whereas the town of Red Hook has noted the need for review of speed limits on East Curly Corners Road, County Route 78, particularly between Route 9 and Williams Road. Now therefore be it resolved by the town board of the town of Red Hook as follows. And it talks to each of these roads with recommendations for consideration to Dutchess County Department of Public Works, which is the first step that we must take in order to get these speed reductions. So I'll just go through the roads. Rockefeller Lane and Walesback to 9G, reduction from 55 to 35. Walesback Road from Bud's Corners to Columbia Avenue, limit of 35 reduced to 30 miles per hour. In the area of College Park, Harvard Street, Princeton Street, Amherst Street, Columbia Avenue, Cornell Avenue, Vassar Road, Thayer Lane, from the townwide limit of 35 to recommended 25. We're asking for that reduction from the county, allowing us to do that. Again, Linden Acres, including Elm, Albee, Fur, Alder, Aspen Mall, Colonial Manor, North Road, Bard Avenue, West Bard Avenue, Trow, Carriage Drive, Meadow Drive, Sock Hill Avenue, and Zabriski Court, from the townwide, 35 to 25 miles per hour. Reduction on Willow Park subdivision, Hewlett Road, Willow Drive, and Maury Road, from 35 to 25. Forest Park subdivision, Edgewood Drive, Cedar Drive, Evergreen Lane, Birchwood Drive, Overlook Drive, Apple Tree Drive, Shady Lane, Mountain View Court, and Colina Drive, from the townwide limit of 35 to 25. We're asking them to consider a reduction on Echo Valley Road, Blue Echo Road, and Willard Road from 35 to 25. And we request a reduction of speed limit on Deer Run Road from 35 to 25. And finally, a request that the Dutchess County Public Works and New York Department of Transportation undertake a study of East Curly Corners Road, County Route 78, and consider reducing that speed limit on all or portions of such road from 55 miles per hour to a safe speed as such or portions thereof, for such road or portions thereof. So this is a resolution that will be, when voted on and if passed, will go to Dutchess County DPW. And I so moved. This is the first step in accomplishing these speed reductions. I so moved?
Second.
Okay. Open for discussion? Anyone?
So we just group our town roads along with the county roads in the same resolution and so on, even though that, you know, like, there's a couple, two or three county roads in here, and the rest are our town roads. I know we have to go through the county for permission, but we just, one resolution or do it for the whole bunch of them together?
Well, I'm not the attorney, but I assume so.
Well, we just need to submit a resolution. I mean, if they come back to us, this is a lot of ask. So if they come back to us and ask us for follow-up, we can certainly do some follow-up, but we wanted to start it with DPW.
You know, if it's that, you know, the, obviously Bud's Corner is a county road, and then East Curly Corner is a county road, and we want to request.
I believe everyone, yeah.
Dutchess County and New York State Transportation.
Right. I believe everyone where it is a county road, or they intersect with a state road cites that in this resolution, I think.
I think the only distinction on Bud's Corner is.
County Route 78 and County Route.
Well, Bud's Corner intersects the state highway, it didn't include the New York State Department of Transportation in that one, in the first one.
Right.
It's a county road.
Right, but it intersects state Route 9G, as does Curly Corner.
Are you suggesting it should say 9G or New York State?
I'm just asking if this is adequate for what we want, that's what I'm asking.
You're asking if we should say New York State Route 9, or 9G, or whatever it is? Is that what the modification you're suggesting?
No, no, no. You said that, you said on the Curly Corners one, we also asked the state because it intersected with the state highway. And I said, well, if that's the case, we didn't ask the state to weigh in on our number one, because that intersects the state highway as well, Route 9G. And I, you know, I'm just asking if this is adequate to start the ball rolling.
I think so, but if you want to say, asking the Commissioner of Department of Public Works, you're saying "and" the DOT to undertake the study?
That's what it sounds like.
Sure.
I mean, it would be consistent with what we're asking for at 9.
Right. Because those are county roads, as opposed to the others, which are town roads.
Yes.
Sure, we can add that. So that.
I think we had a specific ask on that one because of the nature of the posting speed limits there already, and the other one, we had a generic ask.
Right, the actual speed limit, but half of it's marked with safe speed limits.
Right.
Yeah.
Do we need to include the development Glen Pond? I mean, are we trying to just include all town roads?
We spoke to a list that we had from Teresa after her discussions internally, so I would ask Teresa what that is.
Glen Pond is not seen here.
Not Glen Pond, the one that's off of.
Is that Glen Ridge? I confuse the ponds and the ridges myself.
The one just off of Metzer. Yes, yes. We did not put that in at this point in time. We wanted to address the more, the developments that we have in that list, but they may consider doing a study on that as well. But we didn't want to overwhelm them. We wanted to start with the ones that we thought would be most necessary.
Just for clarity, Teresa, do we have speed limits signs posted on most of these roads?
Yes.
How about places like Hateman Hill and Braly and Fille Nummer?
Those all come under the townwide speed limit of 35 miles per hour, and they're all posted.
They're all posted, and you're comfortable with leaving them at 35 there?
Yeah. What happens, this will go to the county, and I believe the state has to review as well.
The state has to review.
If they don't believe that it can or should be a 25 mile an hour speed limit, they'll make their own recommendation based on the population, the layout of the road, and, you know, what information they find during their studies. So we're starting here. That may not be the final speed limit. We may not be able to reduce them to 25 miles per hour in some of the areas. What we're trying to do is just establish the speed limits in these areas.
You know, West Curly Corner, as I, I drive it frequently, I can't remember any speed limits sign there, and that's also, which implies it's 55, and I think.
It's 55.
Yes. There isn't a speed limit sign there, though, that I can recall. I go on it from the frequently, and I notice those things.
I think it's the same on East Curly Corners. I drive that road all the time.
East Curly Corner?
Yeah, I mean, there's no, I don't remember ever seeing a 55.
Well, then it's 55.
But they have a, they have a lot of curves.
Yeah, yeah.
Slow down signs, you know, 30, 45, but I've never seen.
And East Curly, West Curly Corner doesn't have as many curves, but there's a lot of these, and you can't see over the dips.
Any further discussion?
Just for public clarity, so besides the two county roads we spoke of, the rest are town roads primarily in our densely populated areas, and we'd like to see reduced from 35 to 25, to make it simple.
Interestingly, years ago, they were at 30, and then a new townwide speed limit was implemented, and specifically, that townwide speed limit did away with some of those old 30 mile an hour limits. So we're asking them to go back, and in most of these areas, we're asking them to go back and move back down to a more residential level speed limit, and we, I think we discussed 25, because that's what the village levels are at, right?
I think that was at the time, we had a lot of them posted lower, but albeit probably not legally posted lower, so we, for consistency.
Okay, so is there any further?
That's a good start.
Any further discussion? And are we going to make that modification in the one regarding?
So in number one, after Commissioner of Department, the Dutchess County Department of Public Works, you would insert "and" the New York State Department of Transportation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. The second item on the agenda is consideration of an updated Rules and Regulations for Water District 1. And you have before you some correspondence from our Water Department Secretary Carol Little on behalf of Hank Van Peres and the Water Board. I presume you all have had a chance to read the language. There's a modification on page four of those regs regarding service line material and related requirements.
I did not get those written.
I didn't either, did I? What is it?
We just have a letter.
I mean, I had read preliminary, during the week, preliminary versions of it.
You have in your packet, I think, actually, I think a copy of this, but you have in your packet, I believe, a letter coming from Andy that speaks to this.
Yeah.
And the regulation, initially I had read.
Would you like to make a copy of that page for me?
Is this actually now?
This is a page for everybody, this page?
This is a new provision that.
Just that top page. Thank you, Sue.
Michael Brandi and some of the folks under the Water Department worked out. This language changes Section 2.6 on service line material requirements, and the new language, a portion of the service line from a water meter to a curb stop, along with the connectivity type cable without any joints, their service line itself is 2.75 miles per hour, they cooperate, be installed in the duct of five and six feet, must be inspected by the system operator tried to cover it. The Water District, this is actually the new language, the Water District.
If you wait just one minute, we're getting copies so they can follow. Okay.
Okay, I couldn't tell that it was new language, according to Brandon's letter, so this is what we've modified it to.
This is the new language.
Yes.
Okay. They're basically going to allow a copy of that, or they're not, a copy of that?
Under certain.
Yes.
Thank you, Sue.
I can't understand it.
Have you read it in the letter?
Yeah, I can.
Somebody just put in ladies' turn.
The letter, the letter sounds if that's what it was, it didn't.
Yeah, no, no, this is new, so you're continuing.
Yes, go ahead, now that we have it in front of us. Thank you.
So Water District may allow plastic tubes to be used for service lines on the customer owner portion of the service line only, and under the following conditions. It may only be used on the output side of the water meter, which in most cases means a meter fitting to be installed. The plastic tube and fittings must be NSF international screwed, and the NSF seal of the tube must be printed along the exterior of the fitting, without exception, in order to be accepted for use by the Water District. Further, when plastic pipe is used for a service line at the time the pipe is installed, a metallic tape or tracer wire must be buried in the pipe trench, about one foot below the finished grade of the trench. The taper wire must be capable of being located with a locator heated by direct or inductive signal. All service line materials must meet current applicable AWWA standards, and put the same provided writing to Water Department before service line work commences. And this section is to be used as protection for other rules and regulations of the water service, and it's not intended as a standalone section. I think that's just because that service line material section is a new addition, but it fits into the overall, it's an amendment to the Water District regulations, and so they've prepared, the Water Department has prepared an updated set of rules, so if they give someone a set of rules, they have this new, it's marked draft, but they would have this new set of rules, not this one little sheet of paper to give people, it's a set of rules, okay?
That rules, they read a little bit differently than Brandon's letter.
Yeah, fruit letter.
Fruit letter says you need a meter tit if the curb stop is located over 100 feet from the residence.
Well, I think that's more. Well, I think that that's more specific, I think the regulation says, what does the regulation say, it requires approval.
The regulation says the plastic is allowed, I believe, from the, from the meter pit out.
It's in, in most, for service lines on the customer owner portion of the service line only, on the outlet side of the water meter.
Right, but her letter says the outlet side of the curb cock, but it says a pit is required if the residence is over 100 feet from that curb cock, I believe.
Well, this is more generic, it says, in most cases, the meter pit would need to be installed.
It's workable in either case, without the one-
Right, it doesn't say exactly the same thing.
No, no, but this, but this says, the meter pit.
My, my, my point was, according to what Brandy said, if the residence was 99 feet from the curb cock, you would put the curb cock in, and, and then have 99 feet of plastic pipe, and the meter would be in the house, according to her letter, but not according to our regs.
Right.
And, you know, the county-
Our regs are actually much more specific and more enforceable, I think.
They're a little, well, they, they're just a little different, they, they, but, but both.
But from a functional point of view, they both work, I think.
Brenda?
Uh, well, I know we want to move this forward, and people are interested in getting pike in the ground before the ground pieces, so I, I did take a phone call to Dutchess County Water and Waste Department today, just to be certain that we were on the right track, and, uh, one, one thing that the man I spoke with, Pete Fad, had suggested was that we require the installer to provide manufacturer material certification, and he said that's the best protection you can get. He also was looking for something called ASTM standards.
AST?
M, and he thought that our issue includes specs for the materials that we were going to allow, so is there some way we can pass the resolution with this condition?
Well, this says NSF International approval, that's National Sanitation Foundation.
Mm-hmm, and I told him we had that.
Now, I don't know how that is different from what they suggested.
I don't either, yes, and I don't either.
In fact, this rule that's on here was written by a member of our Water Board, who works for the, who is a professional at the Dutchess County Water and Waste Water, where Brenda got that information from, so. And, and when you talk to these people, as in all things, there's always an element of debate, in matters of opinion and whatever. Can you, you, Jim, you had the, you had that engineering background, you can't ever get two engineers together without getting to totally agree. And that's what you have here.
There's a lot of truth in that.
Okay, so let's decide what we're doing, and whether we want to take the resolution that we have before us and move on it, or whether we want to require Brandy to insert in the regs that the Water Board are recommending, language that she is using. I, I'm not an engineer, nor do I know a whole lot about water lines, so I'm going to have to assume that if she told me on the phone that these recommended revisions to the Water District's regs, she said the language is good.
You know, can I just insert that she is also summarizing some different provisions of the regs which are already in here?
Mm-hmm.
So, the reference to the 100-foot, there is a provision in Section 2.11 which she's referring to here, which says, "Where the district from the curb stop that the premises exceeds 100 feet, a meter pit shall be installed at or near the property line." So I think she's giving a summary of how these provisions work together, I'm not, is it inconsistent?
What do you mean, in her letter?
Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, I do see what you're saying. I don't see any inconsistency.
I don't think so.
She also noted to me, when we talked on the phone, that, that residents who did not wish to follow the Water Department rules and regulations, had the option to drill a well, of course, under Board of Health regulations, they would have to meet Board of Health approval. So, this isn't the only option for residents, and she just wanted to point that out.
Anyway, with the, with the way it is written now, you know, we require the NSF approval and AWWA standards, I, I don't see any problem with that, I think the resolution sounds fine with the new regs.
I think so, Carol.
And it does say, service line material must meet AWWA standards and proof of same provided in writing to the Water Department, so there is a requirement that they provide that-
That they do, so, okay.
Okay, any further discussion, Bill?
Well, should the resolution, Chris, specifically say that the board adopts the amendment proposed?
The resolution-
I mean, all it says is that it should, yeah, I don't see that spelled out. No, we have these rules and regulations updated in 2011.
It refers to-
And their recommendation before the board to amend that section, which we have here, but how do we, how do we approve that before we authorize the supervisor to go ahead and-
Yeah, so in other words, you want to approve, the board hereby approves-
These amendments?
The Amendment to 2.6.
Rules and regulations as amended by section, or as amended October 17, 2013, 2013.
I thought that's what it said.
It doesn't really say that, though.
Could you revise Section 2.6?
A proposed amendment, dated October 17.
No, no, that's right, but he's right that in the whereas, it's in the whereas clauses, but in the adoption provision-
You know, give it to lawyers.
There should be something that specifically says, "The board hereby approves the rules and regulations as amended October 17, 2013."
Right.
In the whereas?
In the, no, in the resolve.
In the resolve, okay, all right. So, would you like to read the resolution with that amendment, Chris?
Now therefore be it resolved that the board hereby approves the rules and regulations as amended October 17, 2013. And, number two, supervisor town court and towns officers are authorized to do all things required or provided pursuant to provisions of the amended rules and regulations and resolutions affecting media.
Is there motion?
So, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There seems to be some question from the, would you like to speak to us about that? What is that?
We need a little bit of elaboration on the tracer wire.
On the, on the, excuse me?
Tracer line, tracer wire that was described.
Okay.
I don't know what that is, and where it goes to the entire length, to the residence.
Yes, it goes from the curb stop, one foot below the ground, along the line of the trench, to the, to the hook up to the house, right.
Okay, a foot below being, a foot below the five-foot depth?
No, a foot below the surface grade.
Surface.
Yep, yep.
What is it physically that, what it is, is it-
Um, I'm sure-
It's a metal tape.
It's a standard thing.
That's a dumb question, I didn't-
It's like a flat metal tape.
And what's the purpose?
The purpose is so you don't dig up your water line by accident.
You can dig it.
If you need to do any digging on your property, they can trace the, the line, and you'll know exactly where it is.
How is it secured, being just-
It's just put in there with dirt.
Buried in the ditch.
It's like a-
Add closing of the ditch.
Yeah, it's like an electric lineman, there are, there's equipment so you can see where it is, from the surface, without, without-
If it's a shelf, if it's a shelved structure, can it go on the higher shelf?
I don't know. And if we have questions, we have questions, who do we talk to? Would it be Brandy?
So, the Water Department would be your first discussion, not the Water Department.
And anybody who's installing this would know what to do, and this is standard stuff.
That's a common thing, so you can find a water line with a metal detector, understand?
Okay, okay.
So, you, my understanding too, is it's a matter of loss of water, if, if there was a sudden loss of a lot of water, and the Water Department recognized, there's a leak somewhere, it would be feasible to find it, find where your water line is, and is it in that area? Okay, so, all right?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you.
Can we get a coffee, Ken?
Certainly, certainly, tomorrow at the Town Clerk's Office? Or at the Water Department office? Okay, Teresa, do you have a question? Oh, sorry, we were just, raising your- Okay, thank you very much, everyone. So, if we could move right into board reports, I do not believe there's an Ethics Board report. I believe there is a report from the Zoning Board of Appeals, and does someone who's familiar with that want to summarize that for us?
Yes, I got here, I was at the meeting the other day, too.
It's in tab four?
Yes, um, the board denied a certain variance, they, they spent a lot of time thinking about this, but the, the variance was turned down five to two, it was an area variance, and they, they discussed it actually over two different, two different public hearings, they had extended the public hearing as well, and they ended up voting against it, because they felt that the need, and they looked up originally how what got them there, and the need, there wasn't a need there for this area variance, so that was denied. And what was the other one? And they, and they granted a variance, yes, for the, for a couple sheds on a piece of property, because that really conformed with what the neighbors had. And that was about it at the last meeting.
Okay. Is there a Planning Board summary?
I can summarize, I went to one of the meetings, and, you know, it's very interesting what they're working on now, they had a minor site plan review for a brewery on Migliorelli Farm, they wouldn't have public sales, it would be to make for wholesale, they expect to brew about 200 gallons a year, and it would take place in an existing ag storage building, and the farm is already growing wheat and rye in anticipation of this happening. Another thing they're looking at is the redevelopment of the Napa Building, Connecticut-based distributor of plumbing, heating, and air conditioning products is looking to go in there, and they are talking about putting a 200, 2,400 square foot showroom with apartments on the second floor out front, and it would be for retail sales to contractors and the general public, and these people already have a sales office in our village. The third thing they've been looking at is redevelopment of the Old Apple A Day Diner, and it would be called the Red Hook Diner, so they're looking to make, the applicant wants to make some structural changes, they're talking about signage, fencing, et cetera.
Is there a problem with that name, in as much as there already is a Red Hook Diner?
The first time I heard it discussed, the, one of the owners of the historic diner was in the roof, and no one mentioned it.
Okay.
It is the historic Red Hook Diner.
Yes, that's true, that is true. The only thing I know that we, we ought to be announcing regarding the Planning Board is that there has been, I'll say it again, there has been a resignation of Planning Board member, so there is a vacancy on the Planning Board, and anyone interested in serving on the Planning Board should submit a letter to the Planning Secretary at Town Hall, you can leave it with you, Sue, and forward it to them. Okay, thank you very much. Department reports, Nancy, are you ready? We may as well have you jump right in here. Jump to the front of the line. Yeah, we're going to move right along through these reports, but you're nice enough to come, thank you.
Very sure. We were at Hardscrabble Hall, where we usually are.
We are the-
The tree committee.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry. And, you know, our visitors were down a bit this year, and we're thinking maybe we're a bit too much out of the fray, but I do see people streaming by to go to Hardscrabble to a Amador for pie, so I think maybe we're maybe just not that interesting, I don't know, but we're going to work on it. We're going to try a new location next year, but, you know, it's an opportunity to reach out to the community, and explain what we're doing, and talk about trees. We do have pictures on the bulletin board that day. The trees from Shiptles are arriving on the 30th of October, we're planting three, we're doing a crab apple snow drift, the Highway Department, Teresa's been helping with this, and to honor George Hildenbrandt for his many years of service, and as Highway Superintendent. We, we're working on a date for the dedication, it sort of still needs to be finalized. We're planting two trees on River Road by St. John's Church, we're doing an assor root from Red Sunset, and a Chile American alleged, a linden. Plans are also in the work, works to move these two blue spruce. They're going to get huge, and so we're going to try to find new homes for them, maybe one at the Abrams Park, and one at the Rec Park.
Great.
And I've spoken with Kathy Stewart, who has offered to donate her tree spade, and Teresa said that she could have one of her crew drive the truck, and perhaps get those done maybe in the beginning of November.
That would be great.
So, we're working on that. We were going to replace the crab apple, I mean, the dogwood tree that didn't make it, and we've decided to wait until spring, because if we're going to come in and do all that stuff, that would be another problem for that, for that new tree. I don't know, you know, the tree spade's kind of a, a big thing.
Yes, please.
And I'm worried about, you know, the, the other stuff that's right there, and I want to be really careful about your sign, so, you know, we'll, we'll look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And, you know, we continue to fine tune our forest management plan, really, we are going to finish it. I sent our notes, I've sent them around to some people, in case they wanted to make any comments. I sent our notes to George Prothes, who is our forester, and he very nicely, you know, sent back some suggestions, and we incorporated some of those in our forest management plan. I want it to be useful, and practical, and, and if, as some of us move on, whoever takes over will have something to work with, and, so we're working on it. I, I think that we're really very close, so soon you'll have something else to read. So, that's it.
That's great, you're wonderful to do all that work, thank you, Nancy.
Sure.
Thank the committee. Okay, I think we should just run down department reports, and if there are any of you who are liaisons, would you just speak up? Animal Control Officer?
No, I don't have anything, so I'm assuming it's been quiet.
Okay, I have nothing tonight from the assessor, the attorney, we've heard from anything in addition to anything you had to say tonight?
We should have attorney-client at the end of the meeting.
Okay, we will have attorney-client at the end of the meeting, thank you. I can report for the business manager that we were on target with the schedule that we are, we had for completion of the budget, and she's been, as she always has done, been wonderful to work with, preparing all the materials we need to work with. Building Inspector, we have, I believe this is Jim's to report?
I've got a report here, anyway, I can, so, there was a total of 23 permits in September, actually from September 23rd to October 23rd, and in addition to alterations, four permits for deck porch, one for demolition, one for detached garage, seven miscellaneous renovation, and four for shed, and a solid fuel permit, one, and it was a total of 23. So, that's a pretty busy period of time.
Thank you. As we noted, we had two grant applications submitted, and we're waiting formal announcement of the Dutchess County Shared Services Grant, so stay tuned, there'll be more on that to come soon. Highway, Teresa?
I have nothing today.
Nothing today, okay. We have a police report from two agencies, one, the Red Hook Police Department, and it is for the month of September, in which there were six arrests, a total of 77 incidents reported, and a total of 32 tickets issued, and the detail accompanies that summary. From the Dutchess County Sheriff's Office, there were a total of 81 incidents reported, and they are- and they are a variety of offenses. Looks like Friday seems to be the busy night, doesn't it? And Sunday, actually, Friday, Sunday? Yeah, Friday's the big one. Okay, purchasing, Erin?
I have, yeah. We had a number of purchase orders, most having to do with the highway, highway department, with materials for the highway department. The biggest and the most difficult activity was getting everything in order for removing the Quonset, Quonset hut, that in fact will be started tomorrow, which when people see this may have been, I don't want to pander, it would have been, already have happened, but tomorrow is the 24th on Thursday, they were out there today looking at it, and it'll be down in a week or 10 days. That's taken a lot of work to get it to this point.
Yes, lots of pieces to that project.
A lot of pieces had to come down, piece by piece.
Thank you, Harry. Water department?
Yes, I've got a report right here, Sue. Normal is 80,000 gallons per day, during the month of September, we pumped 71,000 gallons, so a little, a little below. The wells are holding their own, actually they're, they're high. The normal is 54 feet above the water pump for well one, and it was measured at 56, and it's, the normal's 42 feet above the water pump for well two, and it was measured at 48. All the other parameters, the chlorine, the turbidity, everything checked out fine. And as far as projects, you know, they're still currently use, working on their meters, they provided a list of dead ends and problem areas, to schedule the dead end fall hydrant flushing, it's scheduled for October 23rd, which probably happened today. And that's about it.
Okay, any questions, anyone? Okay, thank you. Committee reports, from the top, Ag and Open Space, Bill?
Well, they meet next Tuesday, although we have a board meeting the same night, they canceled the meeting last Tuesday because of the road rework there, and so we're just waiting the next meeting.
Okay. And we have nothing new to report from Community Preservation, Farm and Protection Committee. Conservation Advisory Council, Brenda?
Yes, they have a report. The CAC continues to champion the Energize New York program to share information about pre-home energy assessments. We have 10% challenge lawn signs, and I think Sue has one, I hear you. That's divine. Available for any homeowner who gets their home report card. To get more information, email askenergyexpert@gmail.com. We continue our participation on the county bike and pedestrian advisory committee and have submitted our priority pedestrian and bike project recommendations for Red Hook Town and Village. We continue to investigate viable locations for bus shelters. Two have been donated by the county and been accepted by the town of Red Hook, and I just add, we've written a letter to the owner of the property that, where Dunkin' Donuts is. Three of our members have taken or will take secret training, and the next training is tomorrow night, I guess. At least one member of the CAC will attend the final Dutchess County Planning Training Opportunity of the Year, which is green infrastructure, building natural drainage systems, and that's on November 18. Barge donated inside recycling cans to the CAC and the Chamber of Commerce. We hope to leverage these to get more businesses to comply with the Dutchess County Recycling Law. The Dutchess County mandatory source separation law was passed by the county legislature in June of 1990 and requires all county residents and businesses to separate certain items for recycling instead of just throwing them in the other trash. And also, each member of the CAC is making a one-minute free smart commercial about a sustainability issue from how to dispose of medicine to the value of trees, and I believe they'll be aired on hand.
Could I ask about the November 18th training on natural drainage systems, Brenda? Who is that, who is that open to?
I think the public.
The public?
Yes.
And where again is that being held?
I don't know, it could be Millbrook, but we can get more information. We still have two weeks to get the details.
Okay, that would be great, because there are people who are interested in exploring options for drainage systems and whether it's been flooding in the past. Okay, thank you. Design hamlet, disaster preparedness, I believe they handed out many, many booklets, and we thanked Franklin for his effort in making those available to seniors and others on hardscrabble day. Economic Development Committee, Harry, have anything on that?
Yeah, I was at a meeting this morning with a number of the business people from both the town and the village, and we always meet, as usual, with the, I'm always at the meeting, and, and the mayor and deputy mayor from the village of Red Hook are always there, and we had quite a discussion this morning about how to make, how to enrich and enlarge and add energy to the whole business sector in the town and the village, and there are a number of ideas that are coming to the forefront, forefront there, and I think that sense of urgency is showing, showing its, well, I was going to say it's ugly head, but actually it's rather good head. There is a strong sense of urgency that we really make some things happen. And some things have started, there are some embryonic changes that you've heard, that are going on with the planning board and whatever, and with some of the businesses. And they're working on them all.
Good, we're grateful for that. Thank you, Harry. Bill?
The Intervene will task force weekly meetings the past month has continued to discuss the proposed TND, Traditional Neighborhood District, which would be the first in a town under the Centers of Green Space Plan, which is proposed for what we call the Hoffman Project off Old Farm Road in the town of Red Hook. The project itself is being still prepared for presentation to the town's planning board. There's, they're awaiting a pre-application meeting with the, with the town's planning board. But in the meantime, the task force has been trying to understand that if zoning changes are necessary in that TND language, what type of zoning proposal would be made to the town board? And we want to thank highway supervisor Teresa Burke, who's been meeting with the task force for that purpose, to inject, you know, ideas about what the town highway department or the fire department or other people would require in a traditional neighborhood district as far as maintaining it, rather than just, you know, whatever the architects put on paper. So it's been very, very worthwhile, and supervisor Burke made a trip herself to Warwick Grove, which is a kind of a, an example of a successful traditional neighborhood district, although it's what they call a planned adult community, a PAC, you know, where you have to have certain age requirements to live there, there can't be any children, and it's within the village of Warwick Grove itself, so it's a little bit different from the one that's being proposed over in the Hoffman Project, but still the same principle about matters of road whiffs and parking and snow plowing and alleys and sidewalks and curbs and all these little details that have to be looked at and, and really analyzed so that, you know, the town gets it right, and the architects and the developers are satisfied that they can do the job the most efficient way with less financial effort. And the task force is going to make a trip to Warwick Grove, I think itself, in November, also see what Teresa saw there as far as their issues go. And at our last meeting, Wynt Aldrich, the town historian, of course, he's a state, state, what kind of word can I use, a state-recognized proponent of historic preservation in the Hudson Valley, but a good local source for the town of Red Hook, but he and Victoria Polidero, attorney for the, attorney for the town, met with the task force, and we started the further discussion of a proposed demolition zoning change in the historic landmark district in the town of Red Hook. So this is, actually the draft of that proposed zoning has already been made, but it needs to be fine-tuned, and the attorneys and planners have to reconcile certain issues with it, so we're continuing with that.
Thank you, Bill. There is a recreation director's report, Harry, you want to summarize that?
Yes, well, it's a multi-page report, and the bottom line is, we're winding down, we have about two more weeks of games and athletic activities to go on in the park, but they are winding down. And the park staff is also winding down with buttoning buildings up and doing what has to be done so that we can winter, winter over in the best way possible, the least amount of wear and tear on, on the park, and be ready for the season next year.
Thank you. It was a good year, other than that intense heat.
It grows.
We have St. Margaret's, I don't see a St. Margaret's report, I don't think they've met.
I haven't yet, I think since the report last-
Okay, seniors service committee, Brenda?
I don't have a report from them, but Nina from, what's her, get her last-
Nina Lynch.
Nina Lynch was a guest, oh, you do have to be talking about, oh. Okay, this makes it easier. A presentation regarding safety for senior citizens in the community will be given by the Dutchess County Sheriff's Office on Saturday, November 16th, starting at 11:00 a.m. at the town hall. This free presentation will give valuable information regarding strategies to maintain one's safety in the community and how to be proactive with regard to implementing safety measures for you and your loved ones. Please spread the word to various religious groups, civic organizations, and specific seniors groups regarding this important topic of discussion. And in addition, Nina Lynch did talk to us about Rhinebeck's program.
Rhinebeck at home?
Yes. They seem to be having a lot of success with that, and I'm hoping we can get something similar going.
There's an error on the title of the next committee, it is Sister Cities Committee, and, yeah, and that committee was unable to meet this past month and plans to meet next month, so more to come. Trails, is there any information about the Trails Committee?
They met and they were discussing how to use their budget, well, they know how to use it, but they were wondering how that would work with respect to our grant applications because we have a grant application in that actually would cover the materials that they were discussing using the budget monies for, so.
So the question is-
Should they go ahead and get the materials, and then what happens if we get the grant money?
You'll have more money.
It would seem that way, right?
I would think. Right? Okay. Thank you. And zoning review committee will be meeting next month, I believe, and I can tell you the date, and they have a number of issues to concern themselves with. It's November 14th at 7 o'clock, that's a Thursday here in town hall, the zoning review committee and zoning issues. And I believe that's it. Does anyone have any correspondence? I think I have general correspondence in a file that Linda has circulating here somewhere. Is there any further public comment?
We could, we could say welcome to the high school student that is with us.
Welcome to the high school student who is with us. Would you like to tell us your name and what class you're representing?
I'm Sarah, I'm a senior at Red Hook High School, I'm in the environmental.
The environmental?
Yeah.
Good for you, good for you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
My pleasure. If we can help you in any way, don't hesitate to call, one of us will be happy to talk with you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, okay, Sarah. All right, so I'd like to then make a motion that before we adjourn, we go into attorney-client. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.